They want to leave him.
Welcome to the March 25th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilmember Rick LaLance has our prayer and our pledge.
Lord, thank you for all the blessings in our lives. Thank you for today, and thank you for the opportunity you've given us. And, Lord, just be with us in our decisions, also be with our citizens, and especially the Goodlow family. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Lance mentioned in his prayer the passing of one of our family members at Murfreesboro, at the city of Lieutenant Charlie Goodlow. And we want to let his family know, and also our police department, and really all the people that he worked with and within the city, and just to say you're in our thoughts and prayers, and we especially want to let the Goodlow family know that they're in our thoughts and prayers. Murfreesboro is a family, and any time you lose a family member, it's extremely tough. We'll move into our consent agenda, and you have a few items in front of you.
Nobody has any opposition? I'm going to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wrightfield, call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have the minutes of the March 5th, 2015, regular meeting in front of you. Do you have any additions or deletions?
No changes. I move we approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion is second.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into third readings and consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 1501 amending Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A zoning section seven and section 18 pertaining to city solid waste collection services to multifamily developments.
Move for passage on third reading.
Second.
Motion is second. If you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Passes on third reading. Move to second readings, and we'll consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15001 to rezone an area along Bradyville Pike at South Rutherford Boulevard, a highway commercial CH District and commercial fringe CF District.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We've got several of our sanitary sewer special assessment districts that we did last week on first reading, so I'm going to condense the reading with the legally required versions that Ms. McGannon has told me I can read, and then if it's okay, we'll do those by roll call.
Voice vote.
Well, we'll do a voice vote, but do that by roll call. No, not roll call. You got it, by voice vote, not roll call. All right, so number five will consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15012 amending Murfreesboro City Code, the sanitary sewer special district on John Bragg Highway. I'm sorry. Yes. Sorry, John Bragg, Thompson Lane, and Overall Creek Basin C.
Move for passage.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15013 amending the Murfreesboro City Code regarding the Overall Creek sanitary sewer specialized assessment district.
Move for passage.
Second.
We have a motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15014 for the Salem Highway and Barfield Road sanitary sewer special assessment district.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15015 amending the Murfreesboro City Code in regards to the Buchanan and Elam Road interchange's sanitary sewer assessment district.
Move for passage.
Second.
A motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15016 amending the Murfreesboro City Code with water and sewers regarding the Osborne Lane sanitary sewer district.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15017 regarding the Three Rivers Special Sanitary Sewer Assessment District.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15018 regarding the Compton Road Special Sanitary Sewer Special Assessment District.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15019 amending the Murfreesboro City Code in regards to the Medical Center Parkway Special Sanitary Sewer Assessment District.
Move for passage.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15020 amending the Murfreesboro City Code regarding the Rockvale Sanitary Sewer Assessment District.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15021 amending the Murfreesboro City Code in regards to the Barfield Road Drainage Basin D sanitary sewer assessment district and the Salem Highway sanitary sewer assessment district.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15022 amending the Murfreesboro City Code regarding the Pitts Lane Sanitary Sewer Assessment District.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, we'll move into new business. In pursuant to resolution 150AR06 adopted by the city council on February 12th, 2015, we'll conduct a public hearing and consider annexing approximately 11.38 acres at 4339 Manson Pike and consider a proposed plan of services for the area 2014-511. R. Lee Roberts, Jr. applicant, and notice of the said public hearing was published in the February 23rd, 2015, issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Blomley.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of council. Our first public hearing tonight is an annexation petition for property located at 4439 Manson Pike. It's located along the south side of Manson Pike, just to the east of State Route 840. The applicant, Mr. Roberts, who is the owner of the property, submitted his application petition in order to make his property more marketable so that he could advertise that it has access to city services and is located within the city's jurisdiction. He has not made a zoning request simultaneous with annexation, and being that it's zoned residential in the county, would automatically come into the city with an RS-15 zoning classification if it's annexed. If it were to remain RS-15, you could expect approximately 25 to 30 dwelling units or single-family lots to be constructed on the subject property. Just to orient you a little bit further, it is located directly to the west of the Oakton, Princeton Oaks, and Blackman Meadows subdivision, which are city single-family subdivisions, which are in various stages of development in the city. The subject property will be relatively easy to affect its annexation. Sanitary sewer is already available to serve the subject property. It is directly adjacent and contiguous with the existing city limits. It's in the city's urban growth boundary. You do have a plan of services and annexation feasibility study in your agenda packages, which details how and when the city will be able to provide services to the subject property. As I mentioned, Mr. Roberts has not submitted a zoning request simultaneous with annexation. It is his expectation that at some point in the future, a zoning request will be made, but at the present time, he does not have a buyer for the property and just wishes to bring it into the city's jurisdiction in order to benefit from city services. Until that time, as I mentioned, it will have an interim RS-15 zoning classification. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions with regards to the request either before or after the public hearing, and Mr. Bill Jakes is here representing Mr. Roberts tonight in the audience, if you have any questions for him.
Matt, how would this property be accessed? Would it be coming off Manson Pike?
Yes, sir. There would. If and when the property is developed, access will be from Manson Pike. That's its only public street frontage, and there are no adjacent subdivisions which stub into the subject property. The existing single-family residence on the property has an existing driveway onto Manson Pike right now, as a matter of fact.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley? Okay. Before we start the public hearing, just wanted to read the rules for our public hearing. We'll ask you to please come to the podium, state your name and address. Ask you to speak no more than three minutes unless you're a spokesperson for a group. Please address all comments to the city council, and at the end of the hearing, we'll attempt to address all comments. Each person will be allowed to speak only once. And with that, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 150A06 to annex an area at 4439 Manson Pike and adopt for same a plan of services.
Move for passage on first reading.
Second. We have a motion is second. Ms. Wrightfield, call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to resolution 150AR07 adopted by the city council on February 12th, 2015, conduct a public hearing to consider annexing approximately 7.78 acres along the east side of Elam Road and consider a proposed plan of services for the area 2015-501 HAK LLC applicant. Notice of said public hearing was published in the February 23rd, 2015, issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. The second public hearing tonight is for property located along the east side of Elam Road, just north of the Joby Jackson Parkway interchange. It consists of 7.78 acres. It is directly contiguous with the existing city limits on both its south and east sides. There's a companion zoning request, which will be the subject of our next public hearing zoning request of RM16 simultaneous with annexation. To orient you a little bit, as I mentioned, it's just to the north of the intersection or the interchange with Joby Jackson Parkway and I-24. To the south of the subject property, there is an existing or there is a developing service station being constructed at the intersection of Elam and Joby Jackson Parkway. And to the east of the subject property is the site of the Schwan Cosmetics development that was recently approved. The annexation of the subject property will be relatively easy to affect. Sanitary sewer is not directly available to the subject property, but can be extended easily from the subject property to the south, which is owned by the same property owners who are requesting annexation for the subject property. Property is within the city's urban growth boundary. It's contiguous with the existing city limits. The planning commission held a public hearing on the annexation of this property on February the 4th, and it unanimously recommended approval of this annexation request. I'll be happy to answer any questions either before or after the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley? Thank you. Okay. We'll open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to come speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 150A07 to annex an area along the east side of Elam Road and to adopt for the same a plan of services.
Mayor, if you look at this property, it's not large enough to be an industrial site. I don't think anybody would want to build their dream home there because it's too close to too many industrial sites and a major thoroughfare, so I think this is a good use for the property, and I'll move for approval, even though this is the only zoning we hadn't got to the use yet, but we'll be there.
All right.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Ms. Wrightfield, call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to resolution 15OZR08 adopted by the city council on February 12th, 2015, conduct a public hearing to consider approximately .7 acres along the east side of Elam Road from highway commercial district to residential multifamily 16, RM16 district, and to zone approximately 7.78 acres along the east side of Elam Road as residential multifamily 16, RM16 district simultaneous with annexation, HAK LLC applicant. Notice of said public hearing was published in the February 23rd, 2015, issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our third public hearing tonight is the companion zoning request for the item that we just considered for annexation. It includes the 7.78 acres, which was the subject of the annexation, and it's the area colored in purple on the map in front of you. It also includes a rezoning request of .7 acres triangular-shaped portion of the property to the south, which is currently zoned commercial highway, and the applicants have requested that that .7 acres be zoned RM16 as well, for a total of 8.48 acres. The request is to have all 8.48 acres zoned RM16, which would permit approximately 136 dwelling units on the subject property. Additional dwelling units could be permitted if certain density or certain amenities are proposed in order for the planning commission to approve density bonuses. But the acreage of the land will permit approximately 136 acres, or excuse me, 136 dwelling units. Just to orient you once again to the surrounding zoning and land uses, the property to the directly to the east is zoned light industrial, and it's being developed with the Schwan Cosmetics facility. The property to the south is zoned commercial highway, and it is being developed with the Kirby Hale service station. Just to the north along Elam Road is a single-family residential parcel. The property bordering the property, the subject property to the north is single-family residential, and it is zoned medium-density residential in the county. Oh, it, I say that, but I believe the county zoning map actually called it out as something else. I apologize if I misspoke about that. But the subject property is directly adjacent to CH zoning and LI zoning and a variety of industrial, commercial, and residential zoning classifications along Joby Jackson Parkway. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. Mr. Clyde Roundtree is representing the applicant, and he has a few brief words to say before the public hearing as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Blomley. Any questions? Okay, Mr. Roundtree?
Good evening. My name's Clyde Roundtree. I'm with Huddleston Steel Engineering, and I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, and council members. I'd first like to thank our planning staff. They just do great work. They work so hard. I'm amazed by how much time they put in, and Matthew always does a great job summarizing the projects. As we mentioned, this is both a petition for annexation and for rezoning, and we feel like it's a prime location for this particular application. Mr. Hale and Mr. Kirby have been committed to doing quality work within the region, and this is another part of their plan to add multifamily housing in this particular location. Joby Jackson and that interchange on I-24 is a very, it's a new interchange. A lot's going on in terms of development. We feel like this will be a great addition to the users out there, providing housing for the various manufacturing plants and distribution centers that are out there currently. And there will be more information if this is passed as far as zoning in terms of the drainage and traffic as we move in through the site planning process, but we're hoping that zoning will be approved tonight. There is a consultant here tonight that they have brought into the mix, Mrs. Jean Klein. She's with Management Marketing Consultants, and she is a specialist on multifamily housing. She gave a really striking presentation to the planning commission, and she has a few words tonight to share with you all as well. I'm available for questions upon the, after public hearing, if that is necessary. And Mr. Hale would like to speak as well upon completion of Mrs. Klein's presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm Jean Klein. I'm with Management Marketing Concepts. We are a property management firm that has been specializing in Rutherford County for the last 26 years. My background was with the Freeman Companies, and I was an asset manager of 25,000 units in 12 states. My address is 781 Jefferson Pike. We chose Rutherford County as our home market. I am from Macon County, which is about 60 miles north of here, and couldn't be more thankful to have been in this area as far as coming to MTSU, and then the opportunity that I had to travel, and then to come back here to do property management. The area is strong as far as business. The quality of life here, I mean, we all know how Rutherford County has grown in the last 30 years and the last 20 and the last 10, and it seems to make tremendous strides every 10 years. From an industry standpoint, the recession that we just recently went through hurt a great deal of people, and they're not able to be homeowners now, even if they would like to. My information says that about a third of the population was affected, either losing their savings, their credit scores going down, those type of things, and of course, lending is very tight now. Along with that, people wanted to be flexible. I mean, it has changed in that people want to be able to go where the jobs are, and of course, we are in a community that there are jobs. So we see people come in every day from every part of the country, and even international people are wanting to come back to this part of the country. I also feel that, I know that you all see apartment complexes going up, and you think, okay, we've got quite a few going up, but we have been underserved for many, many years. When I came back here in 1985, and I had one property to manage, and then I got another one that was close to MTSU, and the demand was so pent up that I could actually close the door and close the blinds, and people would still be knocking on the door. So every market segment, the housing that we have seen, the multifamily housing that we have seen, has been spread throughout the different market segments. You have MTSU, and then you have the different submarkets now that have emerged, and people want to live close to where they work, where they go to church, those kind of things, and so you've seen definite submarkets emerge that were not here many, many years ago. Our population has grown. It is estimated that 35 to 40% of the population rents, and if you took our population and did that multiplication, you would see that we don't have, we don't have, we're certainly still lacking in choice for people. At this current time, our company manages 2,000 units in Rutherford County alone, and our occupancy is at 98%. We have everything from efficiencies to executive homes. We recently opened 3343 Memorial Boulevard, which is an upscale community out near, across the street from the VA Hospital. And it is a unique complex. It has elevators, and we didn't have, and the building sizes are, the first building, I think, is 76 units, and so we weren't sure whether we would get, whether we would have to be given the entire building, but we were given a portion of the building, and we did not have advanced advertising. We were given 46 units on January 28th, and since that time, in basically 40 days, we've leased 30 apartments, and our traffic last week was like 41. So we are getting really good reception, really good absorption, and of course, we keep track of our competitors and know, try to find out what they're doing also. So the new properties, as far as Arbor Brook and Henley Station, Henley Station's a unique product, but the others that are coming up are leasing just as quickly as they get their buildings also. So we feel like that location, which is always a real estate concern, that this is a perfect location, it has high visibility, that it will, it will serve people in the, that very locale that it is, also people who may be driving from outerlying areas who want to be closer in, people who don't want to be in Nashville, so we think that it'll be very well-received also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anyone wishing to speak before we open the public hearing? All right, we'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15OZ08 to rezone .7 acres along the east side of Elam Road to residential multifamily 16, RM16 district, and to zone approximately 7.78 acres along the east side of Elam Road as residential multifamily 16, RM16 district simultaneous with annexation.
Mr. Blomley, I just have one quick question. When you get to site plan review, what we work on to make sure that something we're hearing in the 2035 plan we're working on is pedestrian-friendly and accessibility, because I think this site has got a great opportunity with all of the development and the jobs that are in that area. I don't think there's another multifamily development that's close to the workforce, and we continually hear about a rover route running out there, so it's a great opportunity to be able to walk to work. So can we make sure that we work on the interconnectivity with our sidewalk system to make sure that we do that?
Yes, sir. We'll make sure we look for that when the site plan comes in.
Okay.
Move for approval. Second.
All right, we have a motion is second. Any discussion? Ms. Wrightfield, call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to resolution 15OZR09 adopted by the city council on February 12th, 2015, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately .75 acres at 1516 East Main Street from single-family residential 15, RS15 district to residential multifamily RM16 district, 2015 401 Autumn Woods Partnership applicant. Notice of said public hearing was published in the February 23rd, 2015, issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our fourth public hearing tonight is for three-quarters of an acre along East Main Street, along the south side of East Main Street, which is currently zoned RS15. It is directly across the street from College Heights Street and a small commercial node, which is in between Baird and College Heights, where Far East Restaurant is located. The applicants have made a request to rezone the property to RM16. They have recently purchased the adjoining property to the east, which is already zoned RM16, and it's about five acres. So all in all, once the two properties are combined, there'll be about five and three-quarters acres, and if this property is rezoned, that would permit approximately 92 dwelling units if they combine the two properties and develop them as one apartment complex. On its own, the three-quarters of an acre would permit approximately 10 to 11 dwelling units, but it's the applicant's intention to combine it with the property next door. Along the east, or excuse me, along the south side of East Main Street, from the Boulevard Bar &amp; Grill, which is zoned as a planned development, from that point east towards the subject property is all zoned RM16, with the exception of this property and the property next door to the west, the Dement property, which is zoned RS15 as well. And Mr. Dement is here in the audience today. He has had contact with the planning department about possibly coming in and making an application to rezone his property as well. As I mentioned, his is the property directly adjacent to the west, which is zoned RS15, but he wanted to but he wanted to see how this particular rezoning request went before, before pursuing a rezoning on, on his property. The, the RM 16 zoning, as I mentioned, is consistent with the zoning along the south side of, of East Main Street from Middle Tennessee Boulevard to just west of Jupiter Place. The property across the street, the commercial area, is zoned commercial local. Further to the south, along South Baird Lane, is zoned RS 15, and further to the east, along East Main Street, is also zoned RS 15. As I mentioned, the applicants do wish to develop this as one apartment complex of slightly under six acres. We do need to conduct a public hearing on this matter tonight. The Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval of the request to rezone the property to RM 16. Mr. John Elliott and Mr. Chad Gilbert, representing Autumn Woods Partnership, are in attendance tonight if you have any questions for them, and I'll be happy to answer any questions as well regarding this rezoning request.
Okay, Mr. Lance.
Hey, do you happen to know Matthew, excuse me, Matthew, how long the property just to the east that's already RM 16, do you know how long that's been zoned that way by any chance?
I don't know for certain. I've been here since 2001, and I believe that it's been zoned RM 16 at least as long as I've been here. But, I can't say for certain.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right. Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. If anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Anyone? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15OZ09 to rezone an area at 1516 East Main Street to Residential Multi-Family 16, RM 16 District.
Move for passage.
Motion of second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Blomley, at our, after the public hearing in the Planning Commission, there were some longtime neighbors that back up to this, and I think the developers met with them. Let's make sure that they're in the loop on what's going on, because they've been there for 45 years, and this is a change to them, and we need to make that, keep them in, in the loop as to the information on what, when, where, and how.
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor Young, as a matter of fact, after that public hearing, I asked the developer to, to come and, and speak with the, with the neighbors and introduce themselves to them, and they assured the neighbors that they would design the project in a way that was sensitive to, to their single-family homes.
Pursuant to Resolution 15OR10 adopted by the City Council on February 12th, 2015, conduct a public hearing to consider amending Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A zoning Section 34, Article 4 regarding the flood zone administrator, 2015-801 Planning Staff applicant. Notice of said public hearing was published in the February 23rd, 2015 issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Whitaker.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. Before you tonight, and for your consideration, is a change to what the staff is recommending for our flood zone administrator. Currently, to comply with our FEMA flood zone insurance program, we have to have a flood zone administrator. Those duties currently lie with the planning director. And, after some staff changes, staff got to looking at this and figured that we might rather think about how that's done, and so, this recommendation would allow the city manager to appoint someone, and so, instead of it being paralleled with a job, it would actually be an appointment by the city manager. The Plant Commission held a public hearing on this matter on February the 4th. It was unanimously approved and recommended to council. I would ask that you consider this tonight on first reading, and also hold a public hearing to change this, and I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Is this just a designation of someone that's already on staff?
Yes, sir. Actually, the flood zone administrator, just to kind of elaborate on what that is, is responsible to ensure that we comply with the FEMA requirements for our insurance program. Currently, for years, that was designated to the planning director, and oddly enough, seeing how it's flood zone, a lot of times, we have to go to our engineers, our professionals, and, and ask their guidance on this, and seeing how Chris isn't here tonight, Griffin, I'm just throwing him under the bus and say that he would be a very good candidate for this, as well as Mr. Huddleston would be another one. I can name a bunch other than myself, if you would like, but, yes, and we, we have to go to, to the professionals, if you will, for their guidance on this, and it just makes sense to have those duties where they're, they're better aligned, and with, with the more professional, if you would.
Can I make a motion?
How you gonna designate, Mr. City Manager? Mr. Griffin?
Mr. Griffin or Mr. Huddleston?
You've got, you.
Tough choice.
We need a motion.
Well, we have to conduct a public hearing. All right. Thank you, Mr. Whitaker.
Should we schedule a public hearing? Or conduct?
No, let's just, yeah, conduct the public hearing. All right, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15O10 amending Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A zoning Section 34, Article 4 regarding the flood zone administrator.
So, move. Second.
Motion of second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Well, now, consider recommendations of the principal planner. Ms. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. During its regular meeting on March 4th, the Planning Commission conducted public hearings on the following matters, and then discussed the matters, and then took action to recommend their approval. The first item was a rezoning application for approximately 15 acres located west of Memorial Boulevard to be rezoned from RS 15 to CH, the James B. Haynes Family Real Estate Partnership is the applicant. Item B is the rezoning application for approximately 3.2 acres to be rezoned from RS 10 to RS 12, .28 acres to be rezoned from RS 10 to RS 15, 6.75 acres to be rezoned from RS 12 to RS 10, 3.04 acres to be rezoned from RS 12 to RS 15, and 1.06 acres to be rezoned from RS 15 to RS 12 located in the Salem Creek subdivision, south of New Salem Highway. Salem Creek Partnership is the applicant for that one. And, finally, a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding the minimum space required between buildings and parking indoor access drives in the GDO, the required base of building landscaping and other related sections, and planning staff was the applicant on that item. As I mentioned, the Planning Commission studied these items, conducted public hearings, and recommends approval of all three items. All three items were easily handled in one evening.
Ms. McGann, what are you recommending for a public hearing date?
I would recommend April 16th.
Move instead of public hearing, April 16th.
Have a motion.
Second.
Wait a minute. Motion of second.
You'll be back from Florida.
All right, have a motion of second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
And, our second item is a right-of-way abandonment request for a portion of Agri Park Drive. Subject property is located along the west side of Agri Park Drive. It's actually just .05 acres of, of right-of-way. As you can see on the, on the map in front of you, if we could pull the map up, it is a very small portion of right-of-way. It's actually just a small bump out that was included in the right-of-way when Agri Park Drive was constructed in order for the extension of a future public street through that property along the west side of Agri Park Drive. Since that time, the Planning Commission has received a site plan and approved a site plan for an apartment complex on the subject property, and with that being the case, there's no need for a new public street to be extended through that parcel, and in order to help facilitate the development of that apartment complex, and to even out the property lines and the setback lines, the developer of the apartment complex, TDK Construction, has requested that this small portion of Agri Park Drive right-of-way be abandoned. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on March the 4th, last Wednesday, and took action to approve the right-of-way abandonment request and forward that request on to the City Council. The City Council does not have to hold a public hearing on the right-of-way abandonment request, except to ratify the recommendation of the Planning Commission if it so chooses. It is recommended by the Planning Commission that the City Council approve the right-of-way abandonment request with the following three conditions. A 30-foot water and sewer easement centered over the existing water and sewer mains must be retained prior to the abandonment of the right-of-way. Number two, the applicant must provide a legal description and exhibit and any other legal documentation, or any other documentation necessary for the preparation of the required legal documents. And, number three, all legal documents are subject to the approval of the city attorney. As I mentioned, no public hearing is necessary. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding this right-of-way abandonment request.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley? Okay.
If there are none, I'll move for approval pending the three stipulations you outlined.
All right, we have a motion of second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Whitaker, we have one more question. If you, I had a note pass, is today your birthday?
Yes, it is.
Happy birthday, Mr. Whitaker.
Well, thank you, and I hope I have many more.
Happy birthday, Gary.
Thank you. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Gary.
All right, we'll, do we need to conduct a public hearing on that, Mr. Whitaker?
I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Be careful what you say. All right, Ms. Wright, do we have any beer permits?
We do. We have a special event permit from the Junior League for a May 16th event at the Avenue. We have a correction of a previous application you've already approved. This is to correct the owner name. It was previously SJS Food and Fuel Corporation, and they have corrected it to SJS Fuel and Food Corporation. Otherwise, everything was in order on that application. And then, we have a new application for a new location at Minutemen Convenience Center at 1509 Joby Jackson Parkway. That particular permit, we lack the background, we have the background check, we lack the building codes inspections, so we would like to issue that permit once it is complete with the codes.
Okay, you have these beer, beer permits in front of you.
Move for approval. Subject, all staff comments.
Second.
Motion of second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
You have a list of payments in front of you that need to be paid? Payments need to be paid, I'm sorry.
Move it up.
Make a motion and pay the bills.
Second.
Motion of second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We have no board and commission appointments. Is there any other business from staff or City Council? Okay. Had a great presentation tonight on the proposed plan for the police precinct, need to say that very quick, but lots of good information for the public. If you'll get on our website, that meeting was televised, and there will be some information on that, so appreciate everyone coming out tonight, and this meeting stands adjourned.